Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Carver Planning Board meeting of August 8, 2023. We will call the meeting to order at 7:03. If we would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to see some fresh faces here tonight. Our first order of business is to continue with public hearing notice on the application of Bean Town Home Services, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 5300, 4341, and 2230(c) of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number 5, Ricketts Pond Business Park, off Spring Street in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 32, Lot 1-5, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. The lot will be comprised of approximately 6,621 square-foot light industrial building with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. This was continued from our last meeting, and at the applicant's request, we are -- the Chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing of Bean Town Home Services until
8:22.
August 22, 2023, 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room Number 1, Carver Town Hall.
I make that said motion?
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. If you could pass this down to Mr. Bott, please, so I don't forget. Our next order of business is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to create Lot 1 and Lot 2 from property owned by Deborah M. Salminen, Assessors Map 101, Lot 14, located at 15 Wenham Road in the Residential Agricultural/ Village zoning district. Do we have anyone here to speak on this matter? If you could just introduce yourselves, sir?
For the record, Stevie Cavalo of Farland Corp. Pretty straightforward Form A, just looking to subdivide the existing lot into two and to demolish the existing structures. As you can see, part of the structure, I mean, part of the property is actually in two zones.
Pull that a little closer to you, thanks.
The village district and residential agricultural district portion closest to the road is in the village district, and that line is depicted on our plan, parallel to the bottom of the page. Be happy to answer any questions.
If you could give us -- what's the purpose of?
I mean, the applicants are here. My assumption is that they're looking to construct, create two buildable lots.
Have you applied for demolition permit with the Town of Carver?
We have not.
How would that work, Mr. Bott, as we can't create a non-conforming lot in this sense?
Actually, it has nothing to do with creating an A&R. A&R, the endorsement of the planning board, is wholly based on frontage on a way. That's it. Frontage on a way. So if you have frontage on a way, the board endorses an A&R. If you'll see the note on my memo that I sent and the note on the plan, it notes that the planning board's endorsement, their note on their plan says that the only -- give me just a minute. The notation on the plan reads, "Planning board endorsement of this plan indicates only that the plan is not under subdivision control under MGL 41, Section 81L, and does not indicate that the lot is buildable or that it meets zoning, health, conservation, or general bylaw requirements. The only criteria for the board's endorsement for an A&R is frontage on a way. It's frontage on a public way, is properly in front of the board for endorsement."
Now, but if we could create this lot, there's a house on the lot line.
I'll stand by my previous statement. The only criteria, frontage on a way. Doesn't comply, doesn't say there's zoning, doesn't say it's buildable, it doesn't say any of that stuff. In fact, it says it on their plan that it's that. The only criteria, frontage on a way.
All right.
And in this case, they have adequate frontage. They also have uses that are available both in the village district and in the RA district. So it's properly in front of the board and should be endorsed by the board.
Does say it on the plans. Questions, concerns from the board?
Is there any wetlands around this thing at all?
There are wetlands towards the rear, depicted and indicated. That kind of heavy dotted line is the limit of wetland.
And the top left part of the plan, Rich, shows a line for Herring Brook back there as well.
Towards the rear of the property. We also depict the edge of water, that line. It's a solid line.
Just out of my, just for my own, is this one of the ones on Wenham that is, like, decrepit?
I personally have not gone there to see the property.
Okay, I see some shaking heads back there.
The applicants here agreeing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know that along that road, there's a section where there's some, quite a few places that are very, they're decrepit, rundown, and hazard to life. Okay.
Further questions from the board?
That's it.
Seeing none, the Chair will accept a motion to approve the A&R plan.
Make a said motion to
415 Wenham Road.
A&R plan.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gasky. Further discussion? Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Let's pick up the malar tomorrow if you like.
Great, thank you.
Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street, LLC, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 67, Lots 4-3 and 4F in the Residential Agricultural zoning district. The proposed scope includes the construction of six new triplex residential townhouses consisting of 18 total units. If you could please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Toccio, I'm here for the applicant, Weathervein at Silver Street, LLC. Jim Bristol, Ryan Bristol are here with me this evening. And then I've got Matt Collins and Taylor Corciano are here from the Crocker Design Group. We're looking again at 79 Silver Street, RA zoned, and as you mentioned, 3900, which is the townhouse development section of the bylaw, requires a special permit, hi, everybody, in the RA zone. Again, we're looking at a total of six triplexes. So they're the triplexes which Matt will show you, resulting in 18 two-bedroom units, and we're looking at 9.18 acres. You folks will recognize this from Maine going on to Silva. As you're going along, when you look up and you see the ever-source high-tension lines on the right, you can see two current curve openings. If you go down there, it's all kind of in the raw. It was land next to and underneath that easement, 150-foot wide easement for the high-tension wires, and it was all gravelled out. So if you go there now today, you're looking at a lot of just kind of scrub growth that comes in all the way down. If you go in and you pull down to the left, you're actually seeing some scarring into the water table where they gravelled so deep. So you're looking at new, age-restricted townhouses. So we do have that. We've got the benefit on the Nula, which is formula under 3900, which is how we came up with the 18 units. So it's basically two units per acre. We're at about 9.18 acres. If we do the math, it comes out a little over 18. We round down to the 18. There's also an affordability component to this, the 10%, which results in two units. So go ahead, Mr. Jim.
I believe it's 15% now.
Is it 15% now?
It was passed at last town meeting, and I believe the Attorney General approved it recently.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. But so what you'll have
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I actually appreciate it because I was just going to do the math, and I won't even try. So we'll circle back with you folks on that, and we'll confirm that, and we'll change our filing to make sure that that all complies. I don't believe that Fasner Neal has the peer review comments back, or at least they weren't as of today. And our intent today is to give you folks an overview. I'm going to ask Matt Collins to go through, give you an overview, familiarize everybody with the site. We're here also to elicit comments. Some things are not complete, such as some of the landscape buffers, but we thought we'd be in a position to come in and elicit some comments on that. We're asking for three rather minor waivers, which we can go through. Basically, on the waivers, one of the requirements is that we map out all significant trees, landscaping, trees over 10 inches in caliber. This is a scrub site, so it's a site where we're just going to be kind of cutting down bushes, doing some grading, and then actually adding more plantings to the site. So it doesn't really, in our opinion, make sense to go out. It's just really a raw, scarred site. The other has to do with traffic, having to do with daily and peak flows, and then also just what the onsite circulation is. We showed the onsite circulation, we can discuss that. The peaks, flows, with only 18 units, all being age-restricted, are going to be hugely de minimis, and we know that from other projects that we have done. We can give you a summary on some of that. And then the final is that units 18, 10 through 18, we've got small patios, which do go within -- there's a 40-foot buffer around the property. It's down to 40 feet when it's the age-restricted, and we've got just their on-grade, and then they, you know, basically additive. Those will also be in the place where we're going to speak with you folks about what we're going to add for potential buffers, et cetera. So Matt can go through that as well. And if you folks don't have any questions preliminarily, for me, I'll ask Matt Collins to go through and run you through the plans.
Well, let's hear the -- Matt?
Great.
If you'll introduce yourself.
Matt, do you want to use this?
Sure. Yeah, so Jeff did a good job giving us the overlay. As you can see, as he mentioned, there's two parcels beforehand. It will be 9.18 acres with the Nula, some tractions with wetland areas, water bodies. We did not have any on our site. There's a negative determination for any wetlands on ours, so that 9.18, we took the times two, get the 18 units. As you can see with Silver Street, our entrance is here. It's a two-way entrance paved 24 feet in width, and with these units, they're roughly 1,200 square foot gross floor area on these units. There's a first floor, and then there's a -- oh, thank you. And on the second floor, that's where the guest room is. We have 31 feet in between each townhouse, and with that 31 feet, we also have the, with the building envelope of 30 feet, we made sure that we were outside of the building envelope in between each building for -- so Jeff did a good job with the actual layout, but from an actual drainage standpoint, we have underground drainage, there are catch basins in the roadway. Everything slopes from the entrance down, and we kept it throughout so we could keep -- our main focus for the stormwater was to make sure that we had all of our developed area, especially impervious, captured and retained in this infiltration basin that you can see over in this area. We're holding it within the 100-year storm, everything there. Another, with everything being gutted and quarried out, it's basically a low point in this lower southeastern corner of the site. The butters around and our site, everything goes down to there. So our main focus was to make sure in our design that we are also keeping everything within, contained within our site, and we did that with that infiltration basin, taking anything developed, and then all the undeveloped area is going to make its way back down to that low point and that southeastern corner. Septic-wise, we have septic onsite over in this eastern area here. We filed our septic design with the Board of Health. We have a hearing next week to go over that, along with the wells. And speaking with the wells, other utilities onsite, the individual units all have their own gas, electric, septic, and water, all of which is underground. For private drinking water, we have two private wells. Well 1 is in this northwestern corner up here, and it is providing water service for units 10 through 18. The second well is down in here, and that is being, providing water for units 1 through 9. Oh, also, for, backtrack quickly, the, for parking, we have 51 spots provided for parking, which meets the 40 that are required under the regulations. And then finally, with our open space area, we needed -- sorry. Our open space area is down here. Under the regulations, requires 30%, so we hold into that 30% for open space, and it's all contiguous, just in that mass area down at the bottom and here. Other than that, I think Jeff covered it. I don't know if you have any other thoughts, but
So the open space 30% requirement, 55 and over is restricted, and we are above that calculation. With that, just as far as circulation is concerned, I have that turnaround island there.
Yep.
We've templated that, looking at entrances 24 in width.
Yep.
24 in width with 1 foot asphalt, called berms on either side, so it winds up being up to 26. So it's got more than ample for a private driveway to develop this size. And I think that probably concludes our, just our introduction.
All right. Have you received a letter from the Board of Health outlining some of their concerns?
Yes, and we're going to be before them next week.
All right. Is this two lots?
So we are proposing to have them, the two well lots, so that we could have one well on each.
I see a property line, internal property line. Is this one big lot, or is this two separate lots?
So we were looking to have it be two separate lots, that be one single tract of land.
If it's two separate lots, it's not going to meet the requirements of the townhouse bylaw, because if you're separating it into two lots, all of a sudden you have, what, a five-acre lot and a four-acre lot roughly? And then, and then you're looking at the five-acre lot being the townhouse development, which would be, what, double that, so 10, 10 on that, not 18. So I'm trying to figure this out.
So what we're going to do is, we need to meet with the Board of Health next week. They've got, you know, a very local-specific regulation, which is drafted on well lots as far as going through this. There are currently two lots, and the question's going to be whether they're aggregated, and then also, we have a deed restriction on one, or how we wind up working that out. What we're doing this evening with you folks, without going before them yet, is to address just the zoning and, you know, basically the site plan, special permit type
That's a big question.
Yep, and it's taken. We've taken a look at it, but it's something that we went through the questions, we've got them, and we've got the hearing or the meeting with them next week. So I can't give you a definitive answer right now, but you've flagged it, which is appreciated, and it's something that we're going to have to, you know, take a look at and deal with.
Has an ORAD been done on this property?
Yes. So we have one, and it's a negative, negative determination with respect to, there's a, an area which was scalped when they came in, and they actually gravelled it, and they pierced the water table. So it's, it's an interesting area, but it's not jurisdictional.
Okay.
Is that what's in the lower right?
Where the arrow is?
This looks like a pond from overhead.
Yep. So when you pull in and you look down, the land all goes down, basically falls down to the left when you're looking at it, if you pull in under the, under the tension. There's water there, but again, it's not jurisdictional. It's man-made, created from the graveling operations, and I don't have it with me, and I'll ask these folks to have the ORAD, which was put together, but it's not, it's not jurisdictional. This land, I mean, if you go out there, it's, it's really chopped up because of all the graveling operations. Nobody really had any appreciation or desire to leave it in a topographical area that's usable. It's really a mess. It's got mounds that are on it, it's got different cuts and different scarring, and if you take a look at the proposed grading, you can see this quite a bit. You can see the existing grades underneath, and then you can see what some of the over, overlying regrading is, and it's, it's actually quite a bit up where the, up where the houses are. The loam and seed is actually specified for that area that leads down to that big cut down to the water table, and we don't have a lot of specificity on that right now, other than the loam and seed. The idea is to retain that and have that look like, you know, a nice, a nice feature. But again, some more input on, you know, some of that would be appreciated as well.
This concern raised about the potential of segmentation in regards to 310 CMR 2201, and I would expect 3011 in regards to the requirements involved in public well systems?
With respect to segmentation on adding additional
The requirement that this, as an entirety, exceeds or meets the threshold criteria of 310 CMR or 301 CMR in regards to this?
Yep, and we'll address that as well.
We're going to require written permission for mass electric in regards to any work to be done or any development inside of their easement?
Can this, has there been any, has there been any, I guess, testing of the water table in that it could support this amount of, I mean, you've already got, we've already got a fairly densely populated area around them, and then to go in and add another 18 families in a very concentrated area, and it's, you're budding up against quite a few properties, and, you know, that's, that's a big strain on the, on the water, on the water source there. It's
Yeah, so we have done test pits all in the developed area. We found that the groundwater was actually lower around where the development is. It was down to, we have our, I think it was 110.2 is where we found groundwater in this lower area in here with our, and our slabs up at 120 or so. So, and then as you go
No, the question that I have is, you add 18 more families into the area, everybody drawing water. Is there enough water to support your project? Because you've got all these other families drawing water, somebody's got a pool, there's quite a few, quite a few things around there. People that have been living, have been living there, and then you wanted to throw a housing development in the middle of it. We do have water shortages. How is this going to affect all that?
So for, it actually does help having the over 55 community. You'll have less water usage for these homes than you would like a typical subdivision.
We're still, we're still looking at throwing 18 families in there. Whether it's two people, or whether it's three, or 10.
Yeah.
It's a drain on the resources, on the natural resources that are right there.
So it's basically, if you just run the DEP numbers, I think it's like 2,700 gallons per day, because it's the 55 and over, and it's only the two-bedroom. So it's, you know, it's, it's there, that's a, that's not a significant number. Do you want well testing with respect to volume? I mean, for the 18, it just, what do you expect, John?
And maybe this will help, but this project's going to fall under a public well system. There's, I don't see any potential way to get around this. I'm, are you, and that's going to push the threshold of the MEPA review or Math EPA? That's, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, it's mentioned here, but it's my understanding that at a certain threshold that this kicks in regardless, under the state, whether the town of Carver
Yep. So we'll, when we speak next week to Board of Health, I mean, there's, the water usage is also, we see it as, you know, basically the reciprocal. The 55 and over on the two-bedroom units, it's only 150 gallons per day of septic outflow. So if we use that, again, it's 2,700, you know, gallons per day. To be able to do that, to achieve the goals for the over 55, plus to get the affordability component, you know, we believe that, you know, it's a highly efficient way of achieving those goals for the town and to put it together, as opposed to single-family houses, some of the abutting. And we've got, you know, huge land, large land areas with single-family homes, multiple bedrooms, et cetera. We also have, I mean, there's an abutting property that's, I think, three units per acre. So I think that if we go through and look at your, the bylaw, I mean, now it's got a higher component apparently for the now it's got a higher component apparently for the affordability. But we comply, we comply with all of that for the zoning. To the extent that we have to take a look at both Board of Health, also some of the water withdrawal, we'll follow up on that, we appreciate your, you know, you're brightlining it for us, and that's something that we're obviously going to have to satisfy boards, to be able to do that for the special permit.
I, I will say that I personally am thrilled with over 55 communities in which Carver was the retirement capital of eastern Massachusetts personally. So, I, I have, I have a lot going for this. If, I'm gonna ask some questions, and they may be repetitive, I'm just, because I made those earlier, so.
I have one quick, are these rentals or purchase?
You know, we don't know right now, it's excellent question.
Your proposal was rentals, I thought.
Excuse me, sorry, John.
I, I thought, way back when, these were rental units.
Way back when, they were proposed as a rental, because that was also tied into a bigger picture. Right now, things are lending, lending environment is a little different, rates are a little different.
Undetermined.
It is undetermined, and also pricing, things of that nature, there's a lot in flux right now. So, to be able to look ahead and predict that, I, we just can't do that now. That, I think, was my question number three from last week.
Because I was gonna ask if this was gonna be similar to the other development, where it's a condominium-type style?
It depends, if it's ownership, it will be condominium-type style. If it's, if it's rental, it'll, you know, obviously be a single entity that, that kind of controls it and rents them out.
Well, we, we would require a condo covenant in regards to, to that, and, and we would need to know before we approved it, because Town Council's gonna wanna take a look at that. A condo agreement, if that's the direction that we're going in.
Great, I appreciate that.
May I?
Please.
So, you were just giving like numbers on the use of the water, this, right? Now, being this bigger unit, I'm sure there's gonna be lawn in there, correct?
Being what, I apologize?
There's gonna be lawn in there, correct?
Yes.
So, you're gonna have a sprinkler system in there, correct?
I don't know yet.
You don't know, so, because that would not show up on your findings, on how much water you actually use. So, you could actually be using a lot more than what you think you're using.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you asking me a question?
Like you just said.
Oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna argue, I just, I understand that.
Yeah. No, I know, I know, you're trying to clarify, but he's saying that the usage per person, based on the 55 and older, and then you add extensive sprinkler systems and lawn watering systems, and he wants to make sure that's included in the calculations for water.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
That's where I was going, that's all, it wasn't arguing.
Did, did I do?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was looking at.
Yeah, and no, no, somebody mentioned, I think, swimming pools, things like that, there's no.
He mentioned that people around the area have swimming pools.
Got it.
So, that's what he was saying, is putting this whole big unit in there, is that gonna affect everybody else around the area where they have swimming pools? Is that gonna cut the water down on them?
Gotcha, understood.
And also looking at the, over by Lot 10, or Unit 10, rather, you've got the, you've got the proposed well.
Can you show me where 10 is?
Looks like it's gonna be less, right around 100 feet or so from an already existing well. And, you know, wondering how that's gonna draw away, draw resources away from that existing well.
Do you see where the other well is?
Yep, is it this, can you see my?
Yeah, so that, that's the proposed, and that's the existing.
Yep.
Where's the other one, is it up right in here? Okay, thank you.
So, we are, we're outside the, the setback for that, for, for a private well. So, we've been through the regulations for being greater than 100 feet from that existing well. I think being that far away, I feel like it wouldn't have an impact.
So, we'll, we'll respond to that.
Dwelling units shall be varied according to 3942. I'm just saying that you should probably ask for a waiver of that one, if they're all gonna be two-bedroom. It shouldn't, I, I don't, I can't speak for the board, but it, it's unlikely to be a big issue with the board. Are they just two-story buildings?
Yeah, they're approximately, like, 1250 square feet each, so not, not really large, and they only have one, one-car garages as well.
They're gonna have bedrooms on the first floor?
Yes.
Okay.
The second floor is also, it's a smaller second floor, it's really just, you go up the stairs, and it's just really a bedroom, and then a bathroom up for the guests.
Okay. Now, you required 40-foot vegetative screening from the, the property lines. And that's, you know, I, I understand that some of, you're requesting a variance on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five of them, but that's supposed to be a natural growth barrier to protect the adjoining residences from headlights, noise, and various other aspects? Do we have any idea what these buildings are gonna look like?
Uh, yeah, I should have.
Yep, be, put that up. Do you want, Matt, will this reach?
You will.
Okay.
And the buffer areas are not to be counted towards open space?
So, first, the front view, let's see, you have three garages right in here. And you can see the, the second floor, just that small little area in here, but this is a good representation, put it all quickly. So, this is just the front view, but we also have the footprint as well.
Now, are they gonna be that singular architectural, are they all gonna be that singular same architectural style?
Uh, they're all very similar, the garages are kind of rotated a little differently, but they're all.
To break it up so that, then they don't all look like the same. You know, the same building, change colors, change a couple of the exterior aspects, so that they're not all.
Yeah, we can do that.
And what's the height, the height again?
The height, they're roughly around 25 to 28 feet, we're gonna have to see that. I know there's a 1.2 foot, 1.2 times for your separation between the two buildings. So, if it's 25, then we have them at 35 feet away from each other right now, so if it stays there, then we'll keep that 31 feet, so roughly around that 25, 28 range. And if you look, so this is the first floor, coming in, and they're kind of mirroring each other when they go in. The bedrooms are in the back, but then this over here shows the second floor. And as you can see, it's really just the guest room and the, the bathroom up on the second floor. Uh, so the garage, they come in right to, and come in, and there's a little bathroom, the den little hallway right in here, but the garage goes right into the, each individual unit.
Mr. Athens?
Mr. Chair, through you, I'd like to go back to the net, the buffer. Is anything else in there gonna be taken down? And if you have an idea, could you, could you give me an idea of what we're looking at between this property and 4 Main Street, 8 Main Street? 5 Silva Street, and probably 11 Silva Street? What is there, what is there now for a buffer?
Yeah, so what's there now, there's a lot of, it's, it's scrap growth. If you go out the 40 feet from the property lines, it gets kind of messy. And then our, our plans look at, particularly with respect to those three properties, we have those noted as well. Those are kind of on the southwest corner. We've got some grading, which matches that, so we actually propose to go in to some grading. We don't have our landscaping proposal yet. What we did was, we read the buffer as being 40 feet, well, retained in a natural vegetative state to the maximum extent feasible. In this instance, instead of just kind of keeping all of that scrap that's there, that's extremely unattractive, what we intend to do is to come in with our bividi, come in with a planting plan, so that we can show you folks, and you can show the neighbors of those properties, that we're proposing something substantial, which will block, which will be more attractive either way than what's there now. So, that will be our proposal.
So, you would be asking to disturb the natural vegetation in order to put up a significant buffer of, like, say, our bividi hedges?
What we're looking to do is to disturb that natural area, so that we can first do the grading that's required, to, to get the land to.
So, the topography is gonna change?
Exactly, yeah, so to get that smooth, as we show on the topography, and then also, we have some swales incorporated as well, to be able to direct some of the, you know, the surface waters down and around, and then down towards that low spot. And we can go through some more of that in, in detail. What we will do as part of that is propose our bividi, which will then be kind of outbound of the swales, pretty much at the toe of the slope. So, there's a slope that comes down at the property line, and Matt can show you that in more detail. And then what we'll do is, we'll propose to have plantings along there. We didn't want to get into too much tonight, number one, we don't have it. We also don't have the Foson O'Neill comments yet. So, we figured instead of just throwing something out there, we would come in and we would say, you know, we, we know that there's the 40-foot, if you go out there, it's a, it's a messy site, right?
I can't speak for the whole board, but I, I can speak for myself, saying that. You know, going forward, if that's something that we're gonna be looking at down the road, I definitely want the largest arbivides there, or the largest plantings that you can get in there for, you know, a, a good buffer.
Yeah, so what, what we usually do on that is we, we kind of find a Goldilocks size that goes in first, because we find that those take and grow larger over time. As opposed to, some, some people go in and they just go out and they buy the hot, you know, the, the tallest stock out of the gate, and then they don't necessarily grow together, they don't necessarily get much higher. So, what we'll do is, we'll come up with a plan and show you folks what the proposal is. But we've, we've done that in other, other spots, and we've got a sweet spot that comes in, and then they get really good growth in, in coverage.
All right, and so, since I have your attention.
You got my attention.
Traffic analysis, are you guys gonna try to do, see to it that that gets done? I know we're only looking at 18 more residents, but we do have Waterview Village that has 54 residents. You know, this is gonna be 18 more, so I just wanna get an idea of, you know, of what's gonna go on if you're gonna, you know, be proposing to put this in. How much more traffic are we gonna be looking at on a regular basis?
So, we were, that's act, we did ask for that as a waiver, to see, just with the 18. We've got, as you, you know, we've got other properties that kind of function, they're the same demographic. The num, the numbers are really de minimis, as far as, you know, the people don't necessarily all have jobs, so you don't have people all leaving at the same, you know, time in the morning to go out to, you know, go out and go to work, so that it really doesn't have peaks, because you have a lot of people where it's age-restricted, that don't necessarily have to, you know, go to employment, et cetera.
Well, I, I actually, I'd like to refer to the fire department and the police department on that, if they think, you know, that's necessary, not to mention the town.
Yep, so what, what we'll do, I had mentioned that we can, we have the templates on how, you know, movements will be throughout the site. We will put together a summarization on that, so, yeah.
Let's see, and the infiltration basin, is that gonna be raised, or is that gonna, is that buried?
Uh, we, we did try to work it into the topography of the existing right now. There is, there will be some fill in the area, say, like halfway. When you get closer towards that southeastern area, there is some fill, but it is raised just above, so that there won't be any surface water going into there, it'll be a little berm along it. So, it's really only meant for that developed area, up to that, that northwestern area. So, no surface runoff is gonna go there. It'll all bypass that, make its way down to that, where that kind of standing water is on the, the lower southeastern portion.
Okay, and then I guess the only other question is, I hope that you guys will be prepared to, you know, speak personally with each of the abutters, you know, what their concerns are gonna be, what they might like, they might like something different, as far as the buffer is concerned, to work with, something, so that they don't have to, you know, look upon this. Not that it's, I know it's gonna be done in good taste, and it's gonna be a beautiful project, but, you know, again, these are being built in their backyard, so I, I would like them to have, you know, good communication with you. And I guess the last thing is, as far as the, the parking spaces, are you considering the attached part to the dwellings, a parking space? Because I, I counted them, and I didn't get, you said what, 41 parking?
I got 51.
51, so where I see three, where I see threes and a four, are you also considering, as far as parking spaces? I don't see the 51, unless you're including the, the grade areas in in front of the dwellings.
Yep, so we're counting the garage for each one, and then each one has their own sing, uh, single parking space, their little driveway. So, I've got 36.
I guess I could do them out.
Yeah, I've got 36 just from the garages in that one spot that each of them have, and then there are 15 visitors' parking spaces.
Okay.
So, that's where we got the 51 room.
All right. That's what I got, Mr. Chair.
I'm just gonna follow up, so we will want a landscaping plan, and it should be designed so that that 40-foot buffer zone, it's not a garden. It should be returned to its natural state in regards with that, and the arbivide is meant, or whatever you decide to do in that is meant to buff that up. Please.
A couple, a couple of quick questions also with regards to, so, looking at, looking at the overall lines here, it looks like, because you've got a, on the property lines, you've got a couple of, you've got a U-shape around a couple of houses on Silva Street, and looking at it, there's a paved driveway on the right hand.
Yep, we see it.
Yeah, and it looks like there's a paved driveway that encroaches on the property line on the left-hand side as well. What, is there a plan to address that right now? How is, how is that going to be handled?
Do you, do you mean so the two, so four? 11 and 13 Silva Street, those two, they're property, they're driveways on ours. We don't have any plans to do anything with those right now.
John, I didn't notice those, we'll take a look, I'm not aware if there's an easement or what's happening. Obviously, you know, that neck and land, I don't think that it's of, you know, I don't think we obviously need it for this. But we'll take a look at that and respond before, and where is the other one, I'm sorry?
Appreciate, yeah, so it's, it encroaches slightly on the, on the left-hand side.
Oh, I see it.
And fully in on the right-hand side.
Yep, we'll, we'll take a look. The intent isn't to upset anyone's apple carts, you know, as, with respect to uses.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was something that was gonna remain an easement, and maybe have a, it's gonna end up being a utility drive to the back or something.
Yep.
You wanna do a state walk? Can we do a state walk?
Yes, I wanna do a state walk. I'm gonna, don't let me forget, but I, I'm gonna, I just made my list, I know we've covered some of them, but we're gonna want monitoring wells. We're gonna talk to our engineer in regards to that. Utilities, where are utilities coming in? Up the road, they'll be underground?
Yep, they'll be underground, Silva Street has a, we spoke with a gas company, and they, they have a service.
Rubbish?
Rubbish?
Private.
But it'll be private, okay.
Individual, or?
I thought you were saying rubbish.
No, I, where's, no, no, where's your rubbish, here you go. Where's it going to be, because we will want that berm screened, and some sort of berm control plan every. in regards to that.
We can do that, yeah.
Make sure, it's, it should be notated. Also, your snow removal should be notated on here, unless it's-
Yep, we have that.
Yeah, they have that.
There was one, yeah, you can't see it on the-
Yeah, it's fine.
I hadn't seen it.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, um-
See all the ones between here?
Yeah, it's down here, down, there's one down there at the bottom.
One down here.
Off and out.
One over here. We had three separate areas.
Yep.
Off the, off the pavement.
And will be, there be a separate building for mail, or is it going directly to each and individual?
The attention for right now is to each individual have their own, their own mail.
I would check with the post office in regards to that. I think they've made a move towards community boxes at this point.
Okay.
Your entranceway is how far away from the intersection with Main Street?
What was that, sorry?
The, the, so the road is how many, how far away from the intersection of Main Street? Several hundred feet?
I'd say several hundred. I don't know the exact number, but it's-
Okay. All right. We'll want that number.
Okay, yeah.
Because you're gonna have a lot of people coming and going and in relation to that intersection, which surprisingly backs up quite far.
At least they've got a light.
Open space, what's your plans in regards to that?
Yep. Right now, we show it as loamed and seeded. We'd like to retain kind of the water scar that's down there. If you folks have any input on that, you know, where right now it would look like, you know, kind of a seeded meadow that goes down, if there's anything, you know, that comes to mind, please-
Well, I was more concerned, is it going to be turned over to the Conservation Commission? Is it going to be put in a trust? Is it going to be kept? There's certain requirements in regards to that, in the bylaw that you should, you should check on.
We'll do. No specific plan right now, but we'll look at that.
Because it, it should have suitable access because it's going to be, it's going to be public.
Yep, we'll look at that. Not a problem.
Have the, have you been in front of CONCOM at all? They have no recommendations?
Yeah, no, no CONCOM jurisdiction.
That's right. Has the DPW been notified in regards to this and the police and the fire? They should all-
I don't believe so.
Yeah, plans have been sent to everybody. They have been, okay. I want, I want to make sure because it specifically says that it's your responsibility to make sure it's done, so. That was, that was the majority of my questions.
That's a good question. Well, I got a question before that. If it's going to be 55 and older, are there going to be sidewalks?
No. No, there are no sidewalks out on Silva, and we don't have any internal sidewalks.
So they're gonna have to walk in the street during the snow?
Yeah.
Also, could you give us a rundown on your septic system?
I did very briefly. I could bring you through it again, just quickly. We have two septic tanks that are-
Three?
There's two tanks and then a-
Okay. I thought I saw three on the map.
Oh, and then there's a pump chamber as well.
Okay, yep.
And then that leads to a pump chamber, and the pump chamber has a force main that makes its way over to the soil absorption system that's over here, and this is a reserve area here. And it's 2,700 gallons per day for that system. There's eight trenches for that that are 77 foot long total that are in here.
And that should be outside the buffer zone, right? Because there's a 40-foot buffer zone along that side too, right? So everything should be off the 40-foot. But most especially if there's issues or problems and there's overflow or various issues, or you gotta go back in and dig it up for whatever reason, you know, it's, it's going to affect, affect people and it's, it is a structure. I'm sure we can give it some leeway in regards to that, but there is going to have to be some sort of buffer between the two properties.
Yeah, we do have some room to, if it helps, we could slide it down and provide some screening. The side closest to, is it 13 Silva Street? We could provide some type of screening for that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. We weren't anticipating that. So we will definitely look at that. I just want to follow up with Richard. I didn't mean to answer currently. Where it's so small, we've got all the guest parking and that's all going to be plowed. We've had other, not actually this type, but other similar situations where we've tried putting sidewalks in, et cetera, and it just winds up being all this like chunky little segments. Someone experience something like this where everything's going to be plowed, the people are comfortable?
Hey, I understand, but, you know, you look at the other side of it, you know, grandchildren are there. They don't want them out in the street walking around, right? I mean, and I know it's only a small complex.
Yeah.
But again, you're talking, you know, 55 and older. You don't know if you're going to have any handicap people in there.
Yeah.
You know, if they have a wheelchair there in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yep. We'll, and we'll look at some more details on that. What we usually do is we usually say where are the people gonna go, and where Silva Street doesn't, it's all just rural. It, you know what I mean? It's, it's country drainage, if you will, especially out in the front. There are no sidewalks. So what we usually do is we usually go to match if someone's going to leave the driveway and go somewhere. So that's the balance that we've got. We'll look at that further and, you know, get a, get a better response.
And I understand, but, you know, 90% of the residents around here have a big piece of land, you know, so there's plenty of room. But now you're sticking 18 units in there, so there's 18-plus cars going to be in there all the time.
Yeah.
So that's my concern, is, you know, more like safety more than anything.
We'll definitely look at it. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't saying-
No, no.
I didn't want to sound curt. I just, we've dealt with this before and I realize after I answered, I was like, oh.
Well, no, it's gonna come back on another question, you know, which, you know, we're good. Those are my concerns.
And I wanted to apologize if I interrupted your question or your response in any way. I'm not entirely certain on the parking requirements. I thought they were somewhat less than what you're-
They are.
Yes, because you have a lot of spots here, and that might give you a little room to move everything out, because it, it looks like 10, 11, and 12 are also within the 40-foot zone. And we'll also want screening, some type of, out by the Silva Street, nothing-
I understand. Yeah, it's, it's actually two per unit and then one per five for a guest spot. So that winds up, if I count it, it's 40. And we've got, we've got an overabundance of some spaces, but we could handle the drainage. And a lot of times, we go into planning boards and they say more, more, more. So we need to, we need to find where the, you know, the Goldilocks spot is on.
Given, even at that, even at 55 and up, a lot of people still have two cars, so they're gonna need-
We need to find that sweet, we need to find that sweet spot, but we show that we, it's not a problem with, you know, the impervious that we have, but the question is, you know, is that too much? You know, it's, that's-
Yep.
Feedback, feedback will be appreciated.
We did just have a presentation in regards to impervious surfaces, and the state really wants us to cut down on them. So I think the board is willing to work, work with that.
Good. We are too.
In regards to recharge rates. Questions? Concerns? Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
It is a public hearing, so I am going to open it up to anybody that would like to speak in regards to this. So I'll have to ask you to give-
Yep, we're gonna give it up.
Thank you very much.
Forget that.
Good evening. Just please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Ron Warwick. I live at 6 Silva. I'm actually not on a butter. What I have concern, I've got two point wells. I've been here for 37 years and haven't had a problem. You know, even we've had droughts and so on and so forth. Never had an issue with my wells. And I think this could be an issue. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many people here have an extra $20,000, $25,000 to put a Nartesian well in, but it's, I'm not going to feel real good if I have to do that, you know? That's not really a good, say, depiction of the property. And you, these, these guys bought a piece of property that's a tough piece of property to work on. Now, I know they've brought in a lot of fill. It appears that it's tailings, a lot of stone and chips of wood and so on and so forth. Now, they're gonna have to bring this property up a lot. And sooner or later, say, let's say 20 years down the road, I do construction too, I've done that, you know, for years. And you're gonna have some cracked foundations and stuff sooner or later. But in fact, there was a pond on there. I know it's been there for 50 years. That's, so that's, as I say, it's not a good depiction of actually what that property looked like, but that was filled in, just recently filled in. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, what, what the, I mean, you have another piece of property to the right, which is going to be like the drainage area. That was only recently introduced to the wet, there's, you know, there's a pond over there, but that's within 10 years because that's what they dug out, you know, when they removed the fill from there. So I don't know. If they traded one for the other, I don't think they can do a hell of a lot with the one on the right-hand side, but the one on the left-hand side, where there's going to be six buildings, that's going to be, you're gonna have to do a hell of a lot of work there to, to bring that up. I don't know how it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be, you know, and I know a lot of the people. I know basically everybody here, and there was, you know, there's a lot of concerns over, over the wells. I mean, you guys know, you've already talked about it a few times. So I spoke about it the last time I was here, and I'm still concerned. I'm getting good water out of both wells. I never had an issue. I had to put a new point in one. That happens after years, but I mean, I've been there for 37 years, so. So that would be my concern, that and, you know, I don't know how much they're gonna have to, more they're gonna have to fill up, but there's the building on, on, I think it was on the far left, that was, that would be like pretty close to being directly over where that pond was, you know? And that was there a long time. I'm not sure how long, but I know it's been there 50 years, so, well longer than I've been here.
Well, the CONCOM gave a negative determination in regards to this accord, and I'm expecting Mr. Pratt has that on file. I'm gonna ask some follow-up questions when you're done.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ron. Has any filling taken place on this property?
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, I have a question for, for the gentleman here.
So yes, there was a negative determination.
Identify yourself.
Jim Bristol from Weathervein.
Yep.
So there was a small area that was part of the negative determination where excavation was too deep, and we have graded that area.
Did you, is this permitted? Did you, were you permitted?
Well, it was a negative.
To fill or grade this area?
It was a negative.
No work should be done on, on the prop, no work should be done on the property without, without a site plan or, because it, isn't, isn't that why we're here?
Yep.
All right. So keep that in mind.
Okay.
Because we're gonna be doing a site walk at some point.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bristol.
My name is Don Clark, and I live at 4 Main Street, but moved down 69.
Mr. Clark, would you mind pulling that microphone over?
Okay.
Our note takers listening.
But moved down 69, and that pond was, had frogs and turtles in it. Now, where are they now? They're all buried. That, my land goes back, it's about 100 foot of that pond, almost 100 foot. I have three, almost 300 foot running on top of a bank here. What happened to the turtles and the frogs that people so concerned about? They're buried.
When was the, well, I'll ask a follow-up question when you're done, Mr. Clark. Thank you. I will ask the question.
Goddamn, shit, keeps coming on.
Oh, if, if there's somebody here, did you have your negative determination from CONCOM before any filling or grading took place?
And-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let me, let me ask them and see if I can get an answer.
Okay. I'd like to ask some more questions too.
Okay. Well, then, then we'll wait. Okay. Please, Mr. Clark.
All right. Now, on my land there, what are they gonna do? Just, they're gonna put a fence up if they do go through with this? There should be a steel fence put up on top of that.
Okay, I've made a note, yep.
And another concern too is the wells.
Yes.
I've got two wells. I've got one that's 480 feet deep, and it's a pretty good well, but, but these other people's got all shallow wells. So are they gonna, are they gonna fix the wells if they go dry?
I, I expect that any damage in regards to a project has to be addressed.
What about 20 years down the road, they go dry?
Yep. Well, we'll have to get answers to those questions.
But like I say, that pond was there when I moved there. It had been there for a long time then. Teddy Vaughn owned the land. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
Do you want me to answer that?
Please, yes. And there's, there's a lot of questions about the pond. I mean, you've even named it the Estates at Vaughn Pond.
That's what we just named it after.
Can you introduce, Taylor, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, sure. Taylor Personno with Crocker Design Group.
Yeah.
To answer your RDA question, we got an RDA, I believe it was either the end of 2019 or beginning of 2020, from CONCOM, and it's been extended due to the COVID cold tolling period until November of 2023.
Of 2023. And have you had an RAD done or an ORAD done on this property?
We don't need either of them because we don't have wetlands. That's why we got the RDA.
Oh, right.
Yep.
You've had the negative determiner.
Yes.
Sorry, because that's a very important aspect of our job, so we have to know where the wetlands are. So that, that does answer the question, yes, that the Conservation Commission did not consider it a wetland.
Nope.
And so then what happened? Was it filled, graded?
I believe that you guys just said somewhere, out there, due to the craziness of the site, they were trying to kind of move some stuff just to make it a little flatter and easier out there.
Well, again, no filling, grading, or anything is supposed to take place without, without the permits.
Gotcha.
Or approved site plan. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is anybody else from the audience that has any questions, concerns?
Was that granted by ERC? Did ERC do anything?
I, I don't know. Well, that would have been for the-
Hi, I'm Andrea at 11 Silva Street, abutting. If there's a rodent prob, yeah, right next to it, right next to the power lines, actually.
Okay, yeah.
Has any construction ever, like, made rodents go into any of the neighboring houses or anything?
You got, Andrew-
If so, if, would that be taken care of?
Actually, um-
I don't know.
The, the fill and grading and leveling of, of land does, does cause that problem, and that should be addressed in, in our construction plan. So absolutely, if, if you want to make a note of that.
And just a question about the power lines, because we're right abutting that. Sorry. Is, is there going to be any work done, like, around those? Because those are really big, scary power lines. Not, they're not huge, but they are definitely there. Is that, like, ever sources property that, there's like a little road that's right behind- Is that like EverSource's property that, there's like a little road that's right behind, right next door to our second driveway? And I just didn't know if there was going to be, if that's like an access road? Or if the power company owns that?
It's, it's a, a public utility easement. And if I'm remembering correctly, it is 150 feet wide. And that we are requiring EverSource's approval for any work or construction to be done in, within that easement.
So they'll like know about everything, everything will just be safe?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I knew it.
No, no, don't be sorry, because we don't, we're all about the health and safety.
Yeah.
And that's supposed to be the, the main part of our job. So we wouldn't want anybody getting hurt. So if, if they're going, if work's being done in there, it has to be done with the approval of, of the utility company.
Because we all have like animals back there and like livestock that we depend on for like eating and living. And I just didn't know if there was going to be, you know, any, the power lines can, I just, as long as everything's going to be safe.
Absolutely.
That was just a major concern. And would there, is there going to be a number or like, are the neighbors going to be able to always be in contact? Or have someone to contact in case something goes wrong on their end, but it affects our property?
So this is, the public hearing is, is, so you're talking down the line?
Yeah.
Well, that's, we have, the town of Kaver has inspections divisions and a Board of Health that will address any issues in regards to this. Mr. Bristol is, seems very congenial and is, I'm sure is willing to listen to any questions or concerns. And, and that's why he's here, because he wants to take all of this into account. Now, they haven't decided if they're going for a condominium or individual ownership at this point. So that's, that's something that we're trying to decide ourselves.
And we'll be able to, like, we'll be able to come to more meetings and know more about this?
You, I, you, no, don't be sorry. Love to have people at our meetings. The more people here, generally, the better.
We plan on staying here forever, so.
We, we love to see new faces here, and we love to see people take an active interest in their town. Not just, not in my backyard, but everything we do here has a, a larger reach for the town in general. And we are an agricultural community, so we are certainly going to take those aspects into account.
Thanks, I appreciate what I think Kevin said. It would, I just really appreciate that attention to the, the trees, the vegeta, there is a, there's a lot of animals there. I mean, there's beautiful fox, there's, there's a lot of, lot of animals that live in there. And I know that, I'm not trying to, I, I know I'm a little person, I can't stop anything, but thanks for paying attention to that aspect. And if that could maybe just be held, you know, close during this whole process, we'd really appreciate that.
We thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else, questions, comments, or concerns? Please step on up. The young lady, I met you briefly downstairs in the lobby.
Yeah, you sent me to the wrong place.
No, I didn't, no.
Third floor. This is the second floor.
Oh, what?
Oh, yeah, we're on floor two.
There's a third floor? I, I apologize because I had no idea. I thought we were the top floor.
My name is Gail Asadorian, and I am the direct abutter, 5 Silver Street. And so right in back of me is this giant hole where I'm hoping that they'll fill most of it all in and put up a fence around it and the trees. And my other concern is the water. So with all those houses being built and all those people there, I've already had to replace my well once. I really don't want to do it again. And I have to, I'd like them to be responsible for it. So that's my concern.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, what kind of well do you have?
I have, I, I think now it's about 300 feet down because the other one was a shallow one. And when Wayne Vaughn was digging back there, he dried up my well, and I had to put another one in. So now I'm hoping I don't have to do that again.
We are going to take precautions, and we will put in testing pits and monitoring wells that will test and monitoring the amount of, of water and water table in regards to that.
And if something does happen, would they be responsible for it?
I would, unless, I, I'm not sure on that. I can't answer that question. I would, I would have to lean towards Mr. Bott to.
I don't have an answer for that.
I don't have an answer for that either. Maybe we can find an answer for that in regards. I think a direct correlation would have to be shown. So I know it's been, there's been some issues with wells recently in town. And the owner of the property did step up and take care of them. So I don't have an answer for you.
Okay. Well, I'm right in front of their property.
Now, if I'm looking at the map, are you at like?
5 Silver Street.
I think it's.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be this one right here.
Okay, all right, yep. Oh, and that was the well you had questioned?
That's the well that I was questioning.
Okay.
The good news is I feel that it's a deep well. I don't know what the, what well they're, are you, are you considering a deep or shallow well for the project? I mean, that's, that's a question that we can, that we can ask is, you know, if it's going to be a deep or a shallow.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get an answer for that too. Is yours a shallow well or a deep well?
I'm not sure.
She's 300.
Yeah, that's, yep, that's a deep well, okay.
John, we don't know yet, but that'll be all part of.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I figured, well, it's something to address.
So we'll have more answers for you, hopefully, at our next public hearing on this.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's fair for, it's fair for us to ask you to note these concerns of the public as well as ours, right?
Oh, I understand.
Okay, good. He beat you, Ellis.
My name's Alan Hanford. My wife and I live across the street from all of this. And my main fear is not getting water. Problem is getting rid of the sewage. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are, those are two things we pay very close attention to.
Yep.
Good evening.
Morning. I'm Alice McMahon, and I live at 2 Silver Street. And my concern is how much of an effect this complex is going to have on the traffic. Beautiful example is they paved 58 and they sent the traffic down Silver Street. Made it very impossible to get out of the driveway. And I know for a fact myself, and I spoke with the Chief of Police today. We almost both got rear-ended at the other end of Silver Street because they ignored the traffic sign. Are they going to be able to come out onto Silver Street? Or are they going to be able to go out onto Main Street?
It's currently proposed on Silver Street. And we're going to want to, we'll, our engineer will check in on the alignment of, of the road exit in relation to existing driveways. And we've also asked the question of where is this in relation to the intersection? So those are, those are certainly, and Mr. Robinson certainly brought up the traffic, the question on traffic. So we will be looking further into those.
Right. Well, I've been living there 30-something years, and I'd have to tell you, I've seen maybe 12 to 14 fatalities at that light because people tried to go through the light very quickly when they get there. I'm right there before the light. So it's, it's a big concern.
I can, yes.
And I, I know with it being a 55 plus, we're looking probably at an increase of EMTs and everything coming in down on the street.
Right, so we, yep, we've definitely put in a request for the Fire Department, the Police Department. And yes, we will check with the EMTs in regards to any concerns that they might have with, with access to the site.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Leah Tebow. I live in Waterview Village at 17 Jill Marie Drive. And I'm, there's like five or six houses on Jill Marie Drive that are right up against the fence or the buffet buffer zone that, where the fence is or whatever there's going to be. I'm having a hard time from where I am, which is.
You're on the right, Leah.
The big.
You're on the right, where John is pointing to.
Okay, so basically the houses are going to be closer to Main Street?
Yeah, so this whole property, there's the infiltration system. Could you point that out to her? Down in there, so take into consideration that you'd have to go past all of that. See that line that's about six inches up? Now it's about a foot up.
Yep.
All the way down that line, then you're going to go across a, like a gravel paved road. And then the houses are those gray, dark gray areas. So you're significantly away from it.
Okay.
Right, these would be the houses here, and this is being proposed as, as open space, or open land, so.
Okay. The question I had also was that somebody had said something about rodents. And we have, like I say, the four or five houses. We've just had an awful lot of rats. Never had that problem with rats. I mean, we've had mice, of course, everybody does. But I've got holes under my house now, under my, and so is, would there be anybody that I could go to for the repairs on that? I've got pictures of, of dead rats.
Right, you'd have to speak to the Board of Health in regards to that. But when it, when it comes to the construction aspect, we're going to request a vermin control plan if they're going to be disturbing the earth. And then once the, if and when the, it, the complex is built, there will be vermin control plans in effect in regards to, to the, the whole of the development.
Because we've had like three houses next to me that have had to have Terminix and hire them to come because there's so many of them. And we've been trying to take care of it, but it's, it's kind of difficult. And my cat isn't too happy, so I can, she doesn't try to get at them, so. But, okay, so Board of Health, I would check with them.
You call them, right, yeah, call them in the morning and make your issues.
I'll go to the next meeting and just see what comes up with that. Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you, Mrs. Tebow.
Who takes these papers?
It's right this way.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions, comments, or concerns? I'm seeing none.
I do.
No, please.
So you said you did some fill in the pond on the map. Could you show me where the pond was then?
Was it where the development is going to be? Or was it where the big hole on the right is?
You can see the depression there from the contour lines?
Yeah.
So that's where they. And that was due to earth removal projects? Is that what was?
That was our understanding historically that it was excavated too low.
Well, I'm expecting if you had a negative determination from Concom, that that would have been.
So my next question would be, how deep was that? Can you have any idea how deep it was?
I'd say three or four feet maybe, it wasn't very deep.
So if you have student.
It was deep, it was four feet. You see it every day almost.
So, well, my concern is, is you're going to be putting a complex there, and if it wasn't that deep and you got a pond there, and you start digging in there, aren't you going to just end up with water?
I think they're filling, I think they're building up.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't believe so. The engineers have, you know, everything engineered.
Well, we'll, we'll have, ask Andy for a test pit in that area.
But you, you understand.
I understand what you're saying.
If your water table's that high and you don't source systems, you're going to be flooding.
For, in that area, we did do test pits out there for drainage purposes. And when we did that, we've, we'll have fill in that area. And it was looking just from like the garage slab to down to where groundwater was in that area. It was like 11 feet or so. So there, there was a pretty significant drop from where the groundwater is, from where the proposed grade's going to be because we're filling that area.
Well, it's kind of weird to have a pond that never dried up if, if it's 11 feet down. I didn't, you know, I mean, well, it didn't have a water source to it.
Oh, yeah.
The water source is going to be the water table.
Yeah, the.
But it was only three feet down, deep.
If you look where, where groundwater is on the, the lower, that ponding area on the, that, like where the water was is around like a 107 elevation. That's more indicative of where the groundwater is, not where the water is for that, the western area where the development's going to be. That's not indicative of where groundwater is. It was better representation was that lower area down by the.
107, you're like 120, right?
Yeah, it's way up.
That's what I thought I was reading up there.
Yep.
Your grade level's about 120 up there.
Yeah, and the standing water where that lower area is 107-ish.
About 18 feet difference.
Yeah, so it's pretty significant.
Are you going to add dirt up in there? Or is that, or you taking dirt out to do the complex?
For which area?
For the whole complex that you're going to put in there.
Yeah, we're, we'll be filling.
Or taking.
We'll be, we'll be filling.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll follow up so we can show you. So basically, the one down, the lower one was indicative of scarring into the water table, whereas the upper one wasn't. So we'll follow up, and we'll follow up with.
Well, I don't want to see you build something that, you know, five years is flooding or, like the gentleman said, you know, cracking.
Good, great questions. I just need to find out if, you know, was that something that was perched? I, I just don't know the answer.
Right, I mean, I got a place, you know, I have to put a well pump in, you know? No matter where I dig, once I hit four feet, I'm in water.
We, so we're confident it's indicative down to the, I want to say the east. We'll get that information to you.
All right, thank you.
I agree.
And when was this filled in? Did I miss that? When was that pond filled in?
When was that depression filled in?
We can get the dates. We have logs from the guys working.
But within the last?
It was after the negative determination, so.
So following the negative determination, and I think Taylor said that the negative determination was 2020. So that would have been in the last, is that four years? We can get that information here.
Why did they fill it in, do you know?
I think Jim just said it's, when we go out there, and I understand that the chairman talked about a site visit. If you go out there, it's, it's uneven, it's very scarred, everything's, it's interesting site to navigate. So if you go out there, we can ask him to describe, what did you do, you know, et cetera? What's this, what's that? There's, somebody had mentioned this, there are different tailings piles. It's, it's just indicative of just a raw site that has the combination of being a gravel pit. And then it also has the 150-foot wide high tension wire easement that goes through it, as I believe Andrea mentioned. It's an interesting site, and it's a site that just, it's just something that hasn't really been shown a lot of love, quote unquote.
I've seen it from a distance. I don't live too far from it either.
If you drive onto it, like you drive by it and you look, you know, but when you actually drive onto it and you kind of realize you can see everything, like in back of, I think it was our neighbor at number five, everything over there is kind of, you know, chunky. But if we get there and it's something that we, you know, we can meet your folks and take a walk, we can take a look at that. And instead of me describing it, I was going to take pictures. I started taking them, and the phone doesn't distinguish, you know what I mean, the field of depth? If you go there and you get out, you can actually see it.
Are there questions or concerns? Anybody from the public have any questions or concerns? No, so it's a range of site walk? Is there a time that's good for you, Mr. Robinson?
Anytime between six and seven o'clock.
Okay.
Sorry.
And what, no, no, what, what, what nights?
I can't do that on Mondays and Fridays.
So we're talking a Tuesday or Wednesday? Or Thursday? Does any of that work for you gentlemen?
No, Wednesday for me.
Oh, Tuesday or Thursday, then?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
And how we set for, we have training section?
So, well, just a couple more, so obviously, we'd like some stakes on the site. So we need to find out what the best day of the week is for you folks, and then let them know to give them time to get this thing.
It's gonna be a Thursday, and then, what, what kinda time would you-
And what would you like staked? Would we like some of the corners of the buildings, or what?
The road.
Okay, so road, center line of the road coming in, can do that? What else would, what else would you like identified?
The, the corners of the six-
Yeah, we'd venture to say the corners where the development's gonna be at, one, two, three, four, five, six, center line of the road, where the road ends at, in relationship to the property line.
Perfect.
We'd also like, um, see where the proposed wells are gonna be?
Yep.
And, uh-
Basin?
Yeah. We'd like to see the basin, and I, I think we'll give you some time to work with the, the leaching field for the septic.
Yep. Are we talking, how much time do we need? Oh, wow. Um, so Taylor's, well, Taylor's saying a week. What, we wanna do next week, or a week after?
Well, it's gonna be Thursday, and I wanna check with Mr. Bott on our training schedule, 'cause I know it's Thursday.
Well, I, I can tell you that it's not the 24th, 'cause you can't make the 24th. Uh, so the 24th is probably the best date. I'm gonna venture to say that continuing this hearing would be likely a month out, considering we haven't heard from Andy. So we wanna get the review from Fussin O'Neil into their hands, and then respond to some of those things. So my two suggestions would be, site visit on the eight twenty-four, and continue this hearing until, that's September 12th likely. That's our first meeting in September.
Okay, does that work for us?
And that was six, six PM on the 24th, Tom?
And I think it's the last Thursday.
Okay.
Then you have what?
Housing, one of the housing.
Oh. Yeah, that would be the 31st.
Yes, and I'm not available.
You're not available on the 24th.
That was the night of the training.
That was the night, right, so.
I'm gonna be up in Boston.
What night's our training, Mr. Bott?
Well, we're gonna talk about that at the end of the meeting, 'cause I don't have a confirmation from you folks.
Okay. So, can we do our training on the 17th, and do the sight walk on the 31st?
I've got an email into our trainer asking, how's the 17th or the 31st work? So, we'll flip 'em. If training's on the 17th, we'll do the site visit on the 31st.
Okay.
Or vice versa. 'Cause you're saying you guys should have, be able to have things staked out by the 17th?
Okay. Those dates work for us. So are we talking about 6:00 PM for the sight walk?
6:00 PM sight walk.
Personally, I won't be there till 6:15, but I don't wanna hold everybody up.
I'll stall for you. Okay, so sight walk 6:15, either eight seventeen or eight thirty-one.
Eight seventeen or eight thirty-one, with potential meeting September-
Super twelve.
Twelve, thank you very much. Great.
And we'll have Andy here for that meeting as well.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will accept a motion from the board to continue the public hearing on the application of Weather Vane at Silver Street to September 12th, Meeting Room One, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much.
Excellent, thank you very much, we'll see you soon.
Should've got a cup of water.
Do we, are you familiar with? Oh.
Handsome gentleman over there? One is the guy that you wanna go to.
Okay, um, yeah, we're gonna take, we're gonna take a two-minute break right now? Uh, we're gonna take a two-minute bathroom break? All right, good evening, gentlemen. Our next order of business is, a public hearing continued on Jeff Opachinsky, MBO precast, requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections 2230 and 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw, for property located at Four Merion Drive in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 21 lot 4-2 in the industrial C, IC zoning district. Applicant proposes construction of a 90 by 160 pole barn on previously, on previously developed area at the MBO precast concrete plant. All right. I think we were, did the sight walk, and we were only waiting to see what Fussin O'Neil had to say on them.
Yes, so, uh, this didn't go to Fussin O'Neil, because it wasn't any technical merit to it. There wasn't any drainage, there wasn't any traffic, there was putting a building on the site, so we didn't send it to Fussin O'Neil. Uh, we were waiting to hear for a clarification from the police department, where they had a note about new roads. So I talked to Jesse Boyle about that. Uh, that memo he sent had the sort of artifact of these new roads from a previous decision, or a previous comment that he made. Uh, so, uh, the only outstanding issue was, was there new roads to be paved, and there weren't any. Uh, so, uh, the only comment that Jesse had, which is included in the draft decision, which I think you have in your books?
Yes.
Um, was, uh, new buildings shall conform with the fire code. Buildings over seventy-five square foot are required to have automatic sprinklers. Uh, this may not apply to the proposed building, 'cause it appears to be utility one, but no walls, or electricity, or plumbing. Uh, if they were to be enclosed or altered at a later date, further plans reviewed by the fire department and the building department would be necessary. Uh, so we've got, uh, an existing site, um, it had a, we've got quite a history, is what, I went back looking at this, in the, let's see here. MBO precast listed a site plan and a special permit approval for this on October 17, 2006. They had a minor modification for the site plan on October, August 7, 2017, and a special permit for a contractor's yard on December 1, 2009. So there's been a number of special permits on the site, and due to the fact that they weren't disturbing the site, other than digging up the concrete to put the post, uh, the, framing in for the foundations for the building, the hundred and sixty-foot by ninety-foot pole barn, uh, there was no review by Fussin O'Neil.
Well, the board requested it, and if, if, if that was how it was felt at the time, it should've been brought up, but there was, the board requested the technical assistance of Fussin O'Neil to make sure that this was in compliance, and, and that should've been noted at the time, or any objections should've been, or concerns should've been brought up at that time, not-
Yeah, I think I said last time that we didn't send it to Fussin O'Neil, because there wasn't a technical component. We're not digging up the earth, we're not changing the traffic pattern, they're putting-
They're our engineers.
Yeah, and I managed the process. And if you wanna, you know, uh-
If the board requests technical information, it should be provided.
Uh, you have the technical information you have, uh, and there's nothing wrong with this site, uh, that raises to the level of bringing our consulting engineer onto the site.
I, I don't wanna get into this now. Is there any further to add in regards to this?
Nope.
Gentlemen? Anything further that you wish to add?
No.
All right. Seeing, um- Seeing none, the board, the chair will-
Well, before you make that, I mean, the only thing I had to add is, um, I did the sight walk, there is a river there, and we just wanted to see, um, if putting the roof on there directing the water is gonna affect anything over there. That's why we wanted Andy to take a look at it. That's all. Um, I'm not a, that's not my job. Without him looking at it, it, it's hard for me to say anything, other than know on this, because I don't have all the information I needed.
As we talked about before, the site exists as a pervious site. So they're putting, on a spot that already has, the drainage has been approved, and they're putting a metal building over top of that. Worst-case scenario is, is the water's gonna be cleaner on the site, because it's hitting the roof of the building versus the pavement. There's no changes to the drainage, there's no changes to the impervious surface, there's no changes to traffic circulation.
There wasn't, it was a drainage swell, it wasn't a river.
Yeah, it's a drainage swell.
Yeah, it's a swell.
For the subdivision.
A river's a whole different ball.
Well, I just saw on the walk down.
Right, but it's, on the plan, it's, that's where the water drains now. That's where the water's gonna drain tomorrow, after it's built.
Goes through a storm sceptor, it's, it's right on that.
The catch basins, and then through, into the, into the Africa.
Yeah, there was a catch basin, but that maybe you saw off, um-
Yeah, we just wanted his opinion on what he thought about the building up there. Yeah.
I'll be glad to-
And I understand, you know, it, it's, it's still the same piece of property, it's just, you know, you are gonna have it slanted, so, you know, you, you know, so the water that's supposed to lay in the middle of the building is not gonna be there, because it's all being diverted. That's all, so it's a little bit more one way and the other way than it is spread out evenly. You understand what I'm saying?
But it's actually going-
It's going the other way.
Towards the catch basin a little more.
It's actually better for the play.
We're good, done. We're good, done.
All right, so, and you, you have no intention of putting up walls, electricity, or plumbing? Okay. So the chair will accept the motion to, uh, approve the construction of a 90 by 160 by 32?
Would you like me to read the draft decision, just for the record, just so we're familiar with all the conditions and things like that? It's very short.
All right, well, the conditions that we're looking to include are reflected in Jesse Boyle's, there should be no walls, electricity, plumbing, and it is not to be enclosed or altered. Those are the conditions.
Correct, and there will be, oh, the conditions are, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, uh, any outstanding balance for review and inspection deposit account will be paid, because in spite of the fact that Andy doesn't have anything to review at this point, he has to review an as-built at the end of the day, to make sure it's built for the plant. So, uh, the codes, the conditions include, prior to that, any outstanding balance for the review and inspection account will be paid, an as-built plan will be submitted to the town engineer and the planning department in both electronic and hard copy format prior to the final inspection, in accordance with 3180 compliance to Carver zoning bylaw, the in general expected project, to ensure it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions.
And the building shall have no walls, electricity, plumbing, and is not to be enclosed or altered from the plan?
That's in the, in the findings of the property, but we can add as a condition, if you want.
I would like to add those, those are the concerns of Assistant Deputy Chief Jesse Boyle.
I'll plug those in as a condition number four.
All right, the chair will, uh, accept the motion to approve with the conditions as stated.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sedillo?
Second.
Seconded by Ms., Mr. Gasky. Uh, do we have any concerns, questions, or comments, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
And Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
All right, and just for the technicality, we need to close the hearing as well.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, the chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing of Jeff Opachinsky, MBO precast, requesting site plan review for the construction of a 90 by 60 by 32-foot pole barn on previously developed area at the MBO precast concrete plant.
I'll make that said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sedillo. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you again.
You have to be voted, because you voted what, before you closed in here.
It's, you can do them in either, either, either order.
Okay.
It's just nice that, it's just-
Before we close the public hearing, usually you close the public hearing, then vote.
I, I would prefer to do it that way, but it's, there's no requirement to do it one way or the other.
Just before they do.
Thank you, I'll say thank you very much.
My next order of business is town planner notes.
All right, so the- So, uh, we got an email from Eversource today, uh, basically letting us know that Eversource is having some webinars about electrical vehicle charging. So we'll put this on our website as well. So they are having three webinars, uh, one about just electric vehicles, one about what you need about charging systems, and another about, a second about those electric vehicles. So the dates are September 14th, September 21st, and August 22nd. So for those folks who are interested in finding out more about these sort of things, you can plug into the webinar and read all about it.
Are they gonna, are they gonna be updated with our latest fire in Wareham?
I saw that on the paper the other day, yeah. So, in addition, planner's notes, we have a training that we need to put together for subdivision and A&amp;Rs. And last time, we had a couple of folks respond to things, so I'd heard from our trainer that the 24th worked for her, uh, but it doesn't work for us. And because, you know, we're in the midst of all this stuff right now, for subdivision A&amp;R, it's just, you know, very important for us to kinda get up to speed on these things. So, today I emailed her back and asked how the 14th, oh, pardon me, how the, give me a second to get to that.
Seventeenth to 31st.
Thank you, how the 17th or the 31st worked. Uh, so I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from her, but I need to know from the board how those dates work for you, because the reason we scratched it is because people couldn't make it, and it's just important that we get this stuff done. So, what's the board's schedule looking like for eight 17 or eight 24?
Eight 31.
Thank you, eight.
Seventeenth or 31.
I don't do math.
Okay.
The 24th is out.
Yep, 24th is out.
Is that Labor Day weekend?
I think Labor Day weekend's the next weekend.
Yeah.
Really?
Hang on.
The 31st is-
Yes, you're right, the 6th.
The 31st is right after, is right before, like, right?
I'm fine with the 31st.
Yep.
I was just curious.
But this is gonna be based on, we're gonna do either or, we're either gonna have a site plan, or we're gonna have our-
Yeah, we got two days.
Right.
One night we're gonna do a sight walk, and the other night we're gonna do-
So we're gonna be busy the 17th and the 31st, we're just determining what we're doing either night.
Yes. So, can I get an acknowledgement, everybody's available either the 17th or the 31st?
And that's Thursdays.
Yes, so it's Thursday, so I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
If we have that meeting, what time- If we have that meeting, what time would it start?
Six. And we'll have some introductions and things like... Kevin has a 6:15 arrival time for most of the stuff he does these days because of his other job.
Well, on a good note, let's hope that that's because the person that I'm with is continuing to live.
I have a lot of confidence in you, dude.
Thank you.
But...
I'm out to break hospice's records.
Yeah, Jimmy Carter's killing right now because he's... He's been in hospice a long time and...
Rosalind passed away not too long ago, right?
No, diagnosed with Alzheimer's, I heard.
Jimmy's wife, it's been a great man, you know. It's been a tough, tough time for him. I... Yeah.
So I will let the trainer know that we've got... Both of those dates are available. Also, we've got a couple of decisions that we had talked about signing. We've got the rescission plan decision, and we've got the preliminary sub plan decision. So you've got some things in your packets. I had put together a decision for...
Jeff Opachinsky?
No, I did, but in addition to that, we also had...
Definitive subdivision decision plan?
Yeah, so the preliminary subdivision plan, I had put together a decision and sent it out to the board. And Connie made some edits and sort of wrote some additional information in the decision. When I got that, and a lot of that deals with the urban redevelopment area, urban redevelopment plan. And as we talked about before, the board can regulate anything that's in their regulations. But there's nothing in their regulations about urban redevelopment plan. So I had suggested that that not be in there. Because in a preliminary plan, and this is the weird thing about Massachusetts general law. In a preliminary plan, they don't have any teeth. They're advisory. But in the definitive plan, someone can appeal that. So you can write anything you want essentially in a preliminary plan, and nobody's going to appeal it. But if you're... You want to make sure you're regulating the things that you're allowed to regulate and putting those things into that. And that's part of the training, and that's some of the slides that I actually provided for you guys that I believe are also in your packets. So you've probably got some green slides that look like these things that sort of talk about, you know, what's a preliminary plan? How do you go about regulating that? So my recommendation in my draft decision was not to include any of that information because the urban redevelopment plan is not in your subdivision regulations. And town council, when I sent this email to them last week, I was waiting for a reply back from them before I did anything else and sent the decision out. So their recommendation was that my email was fine and to essentially stick to the requirements of the subdivision regulations. I took Connie's decision that he drafted because he added some information about it. And the reason my decision was so short was because the board had said, well, we don't have enough information to make a... What was the... We don't have enough information to make an informed decision. I'm paraphrasing at this point. Did not give enough information to make an informed decision on the plan. So I kept it short, put Andy's notes in there because Andy's notes talk about what are the definitions of the plan and one of the things they're going to have to put together. So my recommendation would be to keep it short if we want to talk about the things that they didn't put into the plan that Connie had noted for sections four, sections nine, sections 14, sections 20, sections... Those are fine. But my recommendation, town council's recommendation, would be to keep the plan, your decision, within the four corners of what's in your subdivision regulations. And that's what I would recommend for the board to do.
So Mr. Bott?
Yes, sir.
So I remember that meeting. I did have a question. If you had a already approved plan, not rescinded, how can you turn around and ask for another approved plan on top of that plan?
Well, people...
You couldn't answer it, and she couldn't answer it.
Maybe...
And we were going to ask legal counsel, and I haven't heard anything back.
So there are subdivision plans over subdivision plans in lots of places. Sometimes people... And the law of Massachusetts is if you don't execute a subdivision plan within two years, if you don't start on that, it expires. So there are a lot of expired subdivision plans around the Commonwealth. And they just sort of go away because they're not valid anymore. Very few people come in and decide to rescind the plan. That's why it's a bit unusual for someone to rescind a plan. But when you've got as many different layers and as many concerns as they have, they wanted to clean the slate. So you can stack plans on top of plans because they've expired after two years. Some people have an automatic precision provision in their bylaws as well.
But didn't they put a road in so that wouldn't...
There's no road in.
Well, they made a dead end in there.
There's a...
On Abashon, you can't go in there. They blocked it all off.
So that's a public road. That's not their property.
Well, I don't know. I haven't been down there for a site walk. I'm just telling you what I'm thinking, and that's why I was asking that question.
So their property starts on the west side of Montella Street. So the town cutting off Montella Street, putting in a new driveway and things like that, that's not their subdivision plan. Those are changes to the street that are going to benefit some future development there so people don't have to drive through that same driveway through Abashon's. But that roadwork and that grant imposed roadwork that the town did through, I think it was on ARP program, is not part of their subdivision plan. So only the things that are on their property. So the old plan showed a roadway that was never built, and frankly, that subdivision plan is likely expired. And so you can put plans on top of plans. Sometimes I had people come to me when I was in Kingston. This happened a lot in a sort of more a summer community where there was a lot left over from a 1954 plan that didn't get... The road didn't get built. And somebody said, well, I want to build on that lot, but in the absence of a road, they can't because there's no road there. They have to build it to the contemporary standard versus something that was done in the 1950s. So the cleanest thing to do for lots of folks, but it's an expense that you have to go through to have an engineer do all this stuff and put together a rescission plan. So you don't see a whole lot of them. I've seen... I saw probably none in Kingston over 25.
So the plan's on the grid for two years.
Yeah, so the Massachusetts general law says your subdivision plan is good for two years unless you ask to extend it for good cause. And so then the board asks, well, what's your good cause? You know, if your good cause is, I didn't get to it, broke, whatever, that's not a good cause. But you're going to extend it, but after a while, they go away. So the cleanest thing to do, particularly for this case, in their case, and that's the applicant's decision. Because Massachusetts general law doesn't make subdivision plans discretionary. You don't get a choice. If they file a plan and the plan meets your regulations, Massachusetts general law says a subdivision plan shall be approved. So you get two years to build them. If you don't build them, they're no good anymore. They get stacked up in the registry, but they're not valid anymore. People can put plans over top of plans because the new plan is the plan of record because the old one's expired.
So within six months, someone could put a plan on top of that and it'd be no problem?
Well, they have to come to the planning board to get it approved.
But what I'm saying is, so if you had an approved plan
Yep.
and six months went by and someone come in with another plan, they could put it on top of that?
Well, that would be a modification of the existing plan because that plan's good for two years from the time they do.
All right, so the problem...
So three years, three years and no extension.
Two years has not passed, I have. Two years has not passed.
Since the original subdivision plan?
No, we're talking the 44 behind Abashon, correct, which is the business park.
There's no current site plan, subdivision plan in effect, just the urban renewal plan.
Well, that urban renewal plan. So that doesn't matter? You can put a subdivision on top of that?
Yeah, so the urban renewal plan, and we talked about this a bit before, is when someone wants to put buildings on the property. So a subdivision plan is where the road is going to be and where the lots are going to be and where the drainage for that road and for those lots are going to be. And they put out the buildable, you know, put out setbacks on the plan. When you want to come in and get a special permit to build a building on it, that's what triggers the urban renewal plan. So if somebody says, I want to put, you know, a 40,000-square-foot building on the site, then we'll start talking about how does that affect the urban renewal plan? So when we had this discussion with the site plans and, I mean, the subdivision plans before, somebody had called MEPA and said, we got a citizen complaint inquiry that someone was not, you know, complying with the MEPA plan. So I sent the folks at MEPA all the information about the subdivision plans and things like that. And they said, that's fine. I said, and their subdivision plan is a 1.2... And I'm working from memory, a 1.24-acre lot, a 4.21-acre lot, and a 212-acre lot. And I said, it's likely when people do this that they're probably going to try to sell one of those smaller lots, or maybe two of them, to make some money to do the rest of the work that they have to do. The folks at MEPA said, well, keep us abreast of that because we'd be concerned about someone trying to do some segmentation by doing a plan that's, you know, a thousand little plans versus one big plan. So when they come, when someone comes in, buyer of the property or the people who own it today, when they come in to do a plan for building, a store, whatever it is, we're going to send that to MEPA to say, you know, here's what's going on. Here's what's transpiring to make sure that MEPA's aware of whether people are complying with the urban renewal plan.
Okay.
But the urban renewal plan is only when someone wants to do something that they're putting buildings up. They're putting parking up. They're putting uses on the site. Subdivision plan is only the road and the lots. There's no buildings on them. So it doesn't trigger anything on the urban renewal plan. The urban renewal plan right now is what it is until somebody comes in and says, I want to build with that. Or they say, I don't want to build what was originally proposed, and I want to come back in and look at changing that. And then we go through that process with DHCD, with MEPA, and with DEP and working through changes and amendments to the urban renewal plan. So just boxes, just lots on the ground, not urban renewal plan. Putting buildings on those lots, urban renewal plan. Trying to cut it up into lots of little parcels, potential segmentation of the urban renewal plan. And MEPA and DEP are both going to, you know, put their, you know, they're going to put their thumb on it at that point. That's how the process works. So it's... I've been at this a long time, and sometimes I look at the stuff that I'm doing and I'm going... And you do a lot of these in a row. You go, well, what? Why am I doing that? And you go back and you read the law and go, oh, that's right, because that's what the law says. So it's really confusing even for a guy who's been at this for a long, long time.
Now, at times, things do just get confusing. You know, we won't wait a minute.
But subdivisions are by right, special permits are not. So a special permit invokes that urban renewal plan. A subdivision plan is not. Because it's just where the road's going to be, where the lots are going to be.
It does say that the assembled site as a whole, once all the infrastructure and requirements are done, may be subdivided.
After it's been built.
Well, once the requirements of MEPA have been met.
Are met, okay.
All right, we all set?
All set. Yep, thank you.
All right. In regards to the subdivision rescission plan, I've met Mr. Bott in the middle and removed all references to the URP in regards to this decision because I might have been the only one with that particular issue, may or may not have. If you would like to review... Have you seen mine?
I haven't seen yours.
Yeah, so in your books, in your books, you should have a...
I edited in regards to Mr. Bott's recommendation.
So in your books, you're going to have something that says Connie's draft.
Oh.
It's three pages. And you got a blank sheet. And then you got my edits of Connie's draft where I lined out the URP stuff. And then at the back, we have the alternate town planner's decision that basically have all the things that Connie noted that were not... Were concerns about sections four, sections nine, things that are actually in the subdivision.
Well, I had one with all that that I crossed out included, and Mr. Bott had one that was...
Yeah, so before I vote on this, I want to re-vote.
Well, actually, we've already voted.
Huh?
We've already voted.
We've already voted. It's, yes, it's... You're welcome to re-vote, but his just stops.
Oh, I thought these were... I thought...
His stops here.
It's a matter of which one of them's...
And he's removed all the rest of it, but I just removed what was the RDA. And I kept, this is the paragraph more or less that was kept in. Because I have that long one, and his alternative just ended with the overlay district there. Okay.
Well, I want to be able to read this based on what are we doing.
All right, why don't we...
It's the decision.
Why don't we take a minute?
Yeah.
Take a look at it. I'm going to go...
Yeah, yeah. Yep, we'll take a couple-minute break.
I think you said it was going to make it four.
I thought condition four was the prohibition against walls, electricity, or plumbing or enclosure.
Question?
That's what we approved was no walls, electricity, plumbing, or enclosure.
What did I put down for condition number four?
If we're to be enclosed or altered at a later date, further plans reviewed by the fire department and building official will be necessary.
All right, I'll fix that. Because I can make that statement.
Sure. Because then it becomes an entirely different building.
Well, that is necessary. You put in fires...
It'll need fire suppression. Then it'll need gutters and supporting structures. It'll... It doesn't... It's on concrete, so it doesn't have any foundation to it, you know.
All right. So we're good with that one?
All right, no, that's the...
That's the rescission.
For which one?
For Route 44.
Is that the decision plan?
Recision, yeah.
I don't have an issue with it. Are you all squared on it?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll... Are you all okay with Connie's latest revision? All right.
Is that acceptable to the board, the revised?
I pulled to me.
I took it. I went by Tom's recommendation and pulled out...
Yep.
That, so, all right, we'll go with that. And then, I lost my... And the rescission plan is solid with everybody, so we'll sign that. The chair will accept a motion to approve the amended minutes of 7/11/2023?
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Abstain.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye, so that's 401. See Robinson and Sardillo, 401.
I wasn't here for that one.
Approved. Discussion from the board, anything they want to talk to people in town about? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening, and you have a pleasant night. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening, and you have a pleasant night.